Good afternoon, I apologize for the slightly late start. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. My name is Mark Conway, representing the 4th District Chair of the Committee. Also in attendance from the Committee, I've got Councilmember Z. Cohen from the 1st District. I've got Councilman Glover from the 13th District. I've got Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I've got Councilwoman Ramos from the 14th District.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And that's all I see from the Committee. Other councilmembers in attendance today, we have Councilmember Danielle McCray from the 2nd District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Members representing the Office of the President, Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki, and Matt Stegman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Erin Graff. Okay, and representing the Mayor's Office, do we have Natasha Mihiu on the line? And Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. Okay, this afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0033R, Investigative Hearing, Women in Public Safety: Leveling the Playing Field. For the purpose of requesting that the Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, and Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, and the Director of Department of Human Resources, come before the Baltimore City Council to provide information about their agency strategy to recruit, train, mentor, and promote more women. This bill was introduced on March 8, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Danielle McCray. I'm going to open the floor to comments from the sponsor. Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Committee members. Baltimore City has not been immune to nationwide trends regarding a lack of women in public safety. Less than 16% of our police departments' sworn officers are women, and less than 14% of our fire departments' sworn personnel are women. These trends are not due to a lack of desire by women to perform in these public safety careers, but due to longstanding barriers that stand in their way. And these disproportionate barriers are within recruitment, retention, mentorship, and the promotion of experienced women. Historically, both of our Baltimore City Police and Fire Departments have dealt with equity issues in their hiring and promotional practices as it pertains to women. And it was not until 1978, when the first woman was promoted through the ranks and held the command-level position of Major. It was not until 2020 that the Baltimore City Fire Department promoted the first woman to rise through the ranks to the command level of Deputy Chief. During the last term, the Labor Committee was able to examine the recruitment and hiring practices of the police, excuse me, the Baltimore Police Department, and the recruitment, hiring, and promotional practices of the Baltimore City Fire Department. And through those hearings, it was visible to see that while women have made some progress, there is still a large disparity gap in the representation of women in both agencies, which increases, which increases the higher they try to promote. I want us to continue to work to ensure that women have the opportunity to be present in industries that they have historically been underrepresented in. And 2021 will be the year to open the doors for women to thrive in public safety positions in Baltimore City. I look forward to a thoughtful dialogue this afternoon from our agencies and panelists. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Committee members.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Christopher Burnett from the 8th District, and also Councilmember Eric Costello from the 11th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to a panel. First, we have a retired captain from the Baltimore County Fire Department and former president of the National Organization, Women on Women in Fire, Ms. Angela Hughes. Give me a second, folks, while we make sure that Ms. Hughes is able to get on.
I'm sorry, I was having some problems. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Flow's yours.
Oh, great. Oh, I'll just introduce myself really quick. I am Angela Hughes, I'm retired captain from Baltimore County Fire Department. I am the immediate past president of Women in Fire. I spent three years in Baltimore City from 1989 to 92, and then the rest of my career, 27 years in Baltimore County.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. And next, we have the retired chief of the Newark Police Department and current Police Relations Manager at the Center for Policing Equity and co-founder of the 30 by 30 Initiative for Advancing Women in Policing, Mrs. Yvonne Roman.
Hi, everyone, I co-founded the 30 by 30 Initiative along with the NYU Policing Project. I'm happy to be here to discuss how we can assist Baltimore in meeting their goals.
Thank you. Now, the Committee will hear from Agency representatives. Please use the, please state your name clearly as we announce you. First, we've got the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair, this is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We stand by our report and support, and it meets form and legal sufficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got the Baltimore Police Department.
Michael Harrison from Baltimore.
Jim Gillis from the Baltimore Police Department.
So, Mr. Chair, what we'll do is Commissioner Harrison is going to, can you hear me?
Miss, thank you, someone needs to mute. Go ahead.
So Commissioner Harrison is going to lead off our presentation with some opening remarks. He's going to introduce the rest of our team that's present for this particular hearing. And then when the Commissioner is done, he will hand it off to Deputy Commissioner Gillis, and then you'll hear from a number of other individuals from our team. I do have a slide deck, so if, Sam, if you could give me the ability to share my screen, that would be helpful.
You should have access.
It doesn't, not yet. Yep, there we go.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, and members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee, and other councilmembers present. Thank you all for allowing me to come and talk with you about the important issue of hiring women to become sworn members of the Baltimore Police Department. I certainly want to thank Councilwoman McCray for her leadership on this issue. Policing was once a completely male-dominated profession. Male officers were then skeptical that female officers would have the instincts, the strength, and the courage to face down suspects and perhaps fight crime. It is in my experience that female members of law enforcement actually bring a multitude of strengths, skills, and compassion that make them particularly effective at policing, especially as we consider how policing is evolving to be more community-focused. However, it is noted in the resolution nationally, women currently make up only 12% of the sworn officers in the United States. Now, while BPD is leading the national average with female officers in our department representing 16% of the department, those numbers are especially poignant when looked at in light of new research, which has shown that typically female officers use less force, they're perceived more favorably by communities they serve, and tend to see better outcomes for crime victims, especially in sexual assault cases. Knowing that the BPD and the residents we are sworn to protect would best be served by having more women in patrol and command positions and in leadership roles, I signed the 30 by 30 pledge in March. Now, with this pledge, I'm committed to making hiring women a priority, to having every recruit class be comprised of at least 30% of women by the year 2030. I'm joined here today by a number of members of my team who will provide you with the insight into the steps we've taken to meet the challenge of meeting our 30 by 30 goal by improving our recruitment, our hiring, and promotion of women within the department. Soon, you'll hear from Deputy Commissioner Gillis, who is in charge of our Administration Bureau, Colonel Chabri Briscoe, who is a Colonel, who is our Chief of Detectives, who you might remember, I announced a short while ago, I'll be promoting on June 1st to be the first female Deputy Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department. Major Chris Jones, who is in charge of our recruitment team. Deputy Director Chanel Basfield, also of the recruitment team. Bill Joyner, who is our Equity Officer, and then Michelle Wordsweiler was our Director of Government Affairs. As my team mentioned to the Chairman, I will have to leave before the conclusion of the service, but I know that you're in great hands with this all-star team. At this time, I'll turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Jim Gillis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Committee and guests. Thank you for having us. I echo the Commissioner's sentiments and echo the recognition of how important this is for us, especially at this moment in time, frankly. For my brief presentation, I just am going to go through some, a couple of high-level points, and then the folks who are really in the trenches, Major Jones and Deputy Director Basfield in terms of the recruitment side of things, will be able to address anything that I missed or any specific questions that the Committee might have. And first, I'd like to start with the results from 2020, the last calendar year that we just ended. I think that most of you are aware that a couple of years ago, frankly, when the Police Commissioner, Commissioner Harrison began his tenure here in Baltimore, he right out of the gate recognized the importance of recruitment and retention as one of the most foundational aspects of the crime fight in Baltimore, and one of the most important parts of the police department's operational side of its portfolio, essentially to fill the, fill the ranks. And when he got here, he immediately implemented RecruitStat, which is a performance management tool that we utilize specifically for recruitment as we analyze all the data on every step in the process, and then set goals, and then figure out what are the best tweaks in the process to achieve those goals? What's working, what's not working? And we also heavily invested in a new digital marketing campaign about a year and a half to two years ago, which have returned great results. And the results of the calendar year 2020 include a 70% increase in women applications for the Baltimore Police Department over 2019. And so there was a humongous increase in applications. That's a direct result of the marketing campaign and the investments made into the campaign and the work of their recruitment section. And 2020 also netted a 60% increase in female hires over 2019. And while that percentage increase is fantastic, obviously, you know, the raw data is not where we want it to be, it's still relatively low, and it's actually reflective of the overall agency makeup. And so the total percentage of hires that were women in 2020 were 16.5%. And so that is nowhere near where we know we need to be and where we are striving to get to. And it's, it is really awesome that the 30 by 30 pledge is gaining so much traction right now. We, you know, we're already set on this road, frankly. And so turning towards 2021, we have set our goals for 2021 and beyond to have 30% of our application pool come into the agency, be made up coming from women. And to reflect that exact application pool that comes in, we want 30% of all hires to be women. That is ambitious, but it is something that we are committed to doing, frankly. And I think that we have set up the infrastructure and are in the process of establishing the infrastructure to be well on our way in doing that. As the Commissioner stated, it's obvious why this is important. Diversify workforce is a tenet in any organization, but it's especially relevant for policing when, you know, culturally policing has, has reinforced the opposite of that for such a long time. And, you know, personally, it means a lot to me. I have a six-year-old daughter, and I want my daughter to grow up seeing women in leadership, whether it's police or somewhere else, and thinking that that's normal and not something that's not normal. And so that is why it's important, both from a professional standpoint and a personal standpoint. And I think it's important to point out, and the Commissioner touched on this, how do we compare to other agencies of similar size, other big city police departments, essentially? 15 to 16% of our sworn workforce, meaning officers, are women for the entire agency. That beats the national average by about 3%, as he mentioned in his comments. And 23% of our sworn command force are women, and that also beats the national average for other similarly, similarly, similarly-sized police departments across the nation. So how are we going to accomplish these goals? Well, I want to thank, you know, the folks from 30 by 30 because they have a fantastic roadmap that we are definitely adopting in part of our, our strategy to get to this point. And so thank you for that. And if anyone hasn't had a chance to look at it yet, it's, it's really worthwhile to look at. It is, it's very basic stuff when, when you, when it comes down to it. And how we are getting there is the Mayor and the Police Commissioner earlier this year in the beginning of 2021 asked us to double down essentially on our recruitment and hiring of women and, and set these very lofty goals and have been pushing us on it. And so we've been working closely with the Mayor's Office, and we've been working closely with the newly-created overall City Equity Officer Dana Moore. And she is helping us, obviously, develop strategies to, not just for women, but for all demographic groups, to hire more individuals and looking at it through an equity lens. We also, last year, hired our own internal Chief Equity Officer for the agency, Bill Joyner, who you're going to be hearing from in a few minutes. And he is really starting to touch every part of the agency and allow us and help us look at everything, whether it's external or internal, through an equity lens. And that is critically important, and that is obviously, you know, very prescient given the national climate right now. But it's also just the right thing to do. And he is heavily involved in recruitment and in retention. And you will hear from him about some of the things that, that he is, is helping guide when it comes to promotions and upward mobility in terms of career ladders. And obviously, we've committed to the 30 by 30 pledge the Commissioner signed on earlier this year. And the 30 by 30 pledge is an outside stakeholder who is going to hold us accountable to achieving our goals, let alone just our internal accountability mechanisms. And as I mentioned already, we have a very, very robust marketing campaign, which is a digital marketing campaign, and that's especially important right now, given the pandemic, when in-person traditional recruiting events are suffering because of the pandemic. The digital marketing campaign, which you'll hear more about from Major Jones in a few minutes, we have the capability to specifically target specific demographic groups. Yes.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but do you mind getting to the highlights? I want to give the other agencies an opportunity.
Absolutely, I will, I'll, I'll speed it up. I apologize for, for taking a long time. Marketing campaign is critical to achieving these goals. As I mentioned earlier, we utilize RecruitStat in conjunction with the Mayor's Office and are bringing it in-house here that has a performance management tool in order to ensure that we're achieving our goals. We have a new data analyst specifically dedicated and embedded in the Recruitment Division that is essentially the conduit for the RecruitStat, meaning the performance management internally. And using RecruitStat and using the data, we're able to assess the barriers for women in the agency. Some of the identified ones, we've already identified, and I think this is common across the country, are the physical agility requirements for any agency. There is a disparate impact between women and men when it comes to physical agility and the standards that are used. So we are evaluating the standard that we have been using and trying to figure out what the best model nationally will be in order to ensure that qualified people may get through and are not, frankly, discriminated against because of their gender. We, you know, and, and looking at that, we also, we know, and I think we've talked about this in other hearings, and I'm trying to speed up, Mr. Chairman, that people leave the agency generally because of working conditions. Well, if you dig down one layer from that, that's especially true when it comes to women. And so we have done an evaluation of our facilities specifically for the needs that might be important to women in the agency. And that includes locker rooms, capacity, working showers, capacity in the patrol districts, lactation facilities, and ensuring that the tools that folks need that we might have taken for granted in another generation or another time, that we are readily equipping the agency at a very base minimum line. That is something that is needed, obviously. And then, of course, looking at uniforms. We have a uniform committee that makes recommendations on what types of uniforms to purchase going forward. That falls into basically working conditions, because you have to wear a uniform all day as an officer. And there are different needs based on men and women, and bulletproof vests, for example, ballistic vests, and how they fit on someone. And looking at all of those things, all of that with an equity lens, and then finally getting to retention outside of just recruitment, all of those things play into retention as well, making a, an agency where people feel comfortable and want to work. But retention, you will hear about promotion, the promotional process, career ladders, and then leadership, and more women in leadership in the agency and a mentorship program. Those are sort of the high-level points from my standpoint. If there are any questions down the road in the hearing, I'm more than happy to answer them. And I believe Major Jones is next, if there's anything that I missed or he needs to add.
Major Jones, you're muted.
We still can't hear you, no. Barely.
So why, Major Jones, while you're trying to figure out your technical difficulties, I'm going to go ahead, Mr. Chairman, and show two of our recruitment videos, if that is okay. They should only take a, just a couple of moments.
It could, if, if, if at all possible, can we hold the videos until the end? I do want to give the other departments an opportunity to speak to some of their work as well.
All right, Major, are you able? Okay, all right, while we're waiting, while he makes adjustments, Deputy Director Basfield, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, so why don't you talk about the, the portions that you were going to speak about?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So in reference to our recruiting efforts, as you know, 2019, 2020 and COVID-19 presented many challenges for the recruitment unit as it relates to recruitment and hiring. As a section, we were actually forced, we, we were forced to think outside the box, which is something that agencies across the country were facing due to the physical distance and the challenges presented by, by COVID-19. We had agencies across the country reach out to the Baltimore Police Department because during the height of the pandemic, we were still able to press forward with our recruitment efforts, pivoting from the traditional in-person recruitment efforts to, to the virtual world. And we actually adopted many of the recruiting approaches that were detailed in the PERF's 2019 report, specifically non-traditional candidates, recruiting those candidates who wouldn't typically pursue a career in law enforcement, emphasizing our recruitment incentives, but also ensuring that our, our recruitment process encouraged applicants to apply versus discouraging them to apply with the agency. In reference to our 2020 recruiting efforts, of course, we had several recruiting, recruitment events were canceled due to the pandemic, most notably the invitation for, for us to present at the Urban Alliance. There's a career marketing network, Salisbury State University, the Afro-American Newspapers Career Fair, and also some of the local colleges, Stevenson University and Morgan State University. But with the challenges that were presented, again, the Baltimore Police Department continued to press forward. We are adjusting our strategy, strategies again to align them with the PERF's recommendations. And also, we're gravitating more towards the virtual world. Our Recruitment Sergeant is actively scheduling events in the virtual world. Most notably, in May, we are participating in a cadet event. We're blasting out all of our recruitment materials to the guidance counselors, specifically targeting junior ROTC, Homeland Security programs. We send our information out, we will conduct Zoom informational sessions. We're also going to be hosting a BPD Family and Friends Information Session. And also in July, we're going to be hosting a Women in Law Enforcement Event, specifically targeting women. And we, one of the main challenges that we've recognized with our, our distribution of our recruiting events is we needed to partner better with our city agencies. So we've specifically instructed the Recruitment Sergeant to pair up with our, our agencies within the city, within the city government, to help us to press down the information, to reach the neighborhood associations, to reach those individuals who may not traditionally be connected to the Baltimore Police Department's social media platforms. But we will be sending out information in reference to those events. Also, one of the initiatives that we have coming up, and I'll, I'll try to make this brief, which I think is, is critical, and it's really where the trend is going for recruitment in law enforcement, we'll be hosting a virtual chat with the recruiter. We will dedicate an hour to two hours of time so that individuals interested in law enforcement, no matter where they are across the country, will be able to dial in to speak with one of our BPD recruiters to hopefully have all their questions answered. I mean, so we have a lot of strategies that we have planned for 2021, again, pivoting from the traditional recruitment efforts to now leaning on our social media and our virtual platforms to hopefully widen our applicant pool.
Thank you. Michelle, are there any other key parts that you got to touch on?
Yeah, we, we have two more parts that I think are really, really important. I'm sorry?
I, I do want to get an opportunity to get into questions. I suspect some of these questions will be flushed out specifically.
Okay, I, yeah, what, Mr. Chair, whatever is your pleasure, we will adjust accordingly.
Okay. All right, so with, with that, I think we're just going to move on to the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and also want to thank Councilwoman McCray for introducing this bill. At this time, what I would like to do, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn this over to our Chief Equity Officer, Kim Washington, to give a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman McCray. I believe Chief Ford is on the line, and he'd like to make a couple of opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Kim. Mr. Chair, fellow Committee members, I, I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about women in public safety in general and specifically women in the fire service. We have, we have a presentation that we'd like to discuss, discuss with you. We're looking at as many opportunities to grow within the area of include, of inclusion in the fire service, because we know our history, we know what our statistics are right now. But even more importantly, we understand the relevance of all representation throughout our systemically in our organization to make sure that we're not only effective, but we're also considerate to the needs of the community. So Kim, if you don't mind to begin the presentation, thank you all again.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to say that we welcome this resolution and the opportunity to talk about ways that we can improve. I will be introducing three of our, our chiefs and, or command staff, Chief Shiloh, Chief McConnell, and Lieutenant Yancy to cover various areas that, in the areas of mentoring, recruitment, training, and promotion. We recognize that we aren't where we want to be, but we have come a long way in the fire service from the early days when women were not only unwelcome, but targeted when they did come on board. We have made efforts to change our physical conditions because, similar to what the police department discussed, physical conditions within firehouses have been a barrier. We are talking with our vendors about equipment, about turnout gear, uniforms, so that we are recognizing the needs of our women firefighters and fire personnel. So with that being said, I'm going to start off with Lieutenant Yancy to talk about recruitment and the efforts that we have made over the past, I would say, five or six years to broaden our outreach to the Baltimore community to make sure that people who maybe were, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, folks who were not necessarily traditionally drawn to the Fire Department, understand that there is tremendous opportunity here.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kaila Yancy and I'm speaking on behalf of some of our recruitment efforts. We're working to improve our pool of qualified candidates with a goal to increase women and city residents into our department. Um, we had different, various events throughout the years, although this year COVID kind of put a damper on some things. But when we started our recruitment events, we had a minimum of, of three people going into each council district daily. Um, they also had laptops and iPads with them to sign people up on the spot. We had um radio station advertisements. We had, our PIO made various videos for us displaying different women and people in the department. So that people can understand it's easy for them to come in if they see the opportunities that they can fulfill within this job. We had scheduled events at places like the Department of Social Service, Goodwill Industries, various high schools and colleges. Where we went in and spoke to people and let them know about our job. We went to different um community events, many different community association meetings. We also um did some virtual events, which I attended so we could get ourselves out there and try to recruit different women in minorities. We worked in conjunction with the IABPFF and held a DMV um virtual event. We have also um advertised on various sites such as Women in Fire and um the International of Black Professional Firefighters. So that we can get our message out and under, let people know that we wanted them within our department. So we're working hard with that. And when they come in the door to keep them, to try to retain them, we're trying to develop a membership, a mentorship program. For the members to assist with their transitional phase into the membership of our department. To help identify career development and growth opportunities and establish the smart goals while encouraging and motivating them to be a part of this department. Um, so right now, like I said, we have had some barriers due to COVID. So we're trying in this transition phase to get other ways. And um holistically, we have been able to capture more women and more city residents so that we're keeping up with our goal. And we're still in the works with our um newly hired equity officer to work out some different um approaches that we can do to improve on the efforts that we're currently doing at this time.
Thank you, Lieutenant Yancy. Um, I next want to go to Chief Shiloh, um, who has sort of a typical story of um what it was like for women in the fire service. When they first entered in, you know, I, I know that she is probably reluctant to share the story. But you know, I think it's important that we share how far we have come. Her story isn't necessarily one that is, you know, that is usually highlighted. But I think it's important to understand how difficult it was for women when they first entered the fire service. And all that we're trying to do to improve that and improve the station of women in the fire service and uh how far we need to go. So uh Chief Shiloh, please.
Good afternoon, um, Council Chair and members of the City Council. Um, my name is Laura Shiloh, I'm a deputy chief. Been a deputy chief for the past year. I've been a city employee for 38 years, the last 33 years I've been in the fire department. When I came in the fire department, you could count the number of women on one hand. Um, women were not welcome in the fire department. There were actually written rules that barred women from even going on the second floor of a firehouse. And we have come, um, we've come a long way since those years. Right now, I'm the Director of Training. Uh, one of the, one of the um important um things that we've done to try and promote women in the department. Was we developed um a camp for girls. It's called Camp Spark, it's held out here at the Training Academy. Um, we, we target girls from 12 to 16 years old within the city. A lot of them are, were from the county. However, our goals were to grab the attention of young girls and show them that they can do this job. There's, there's a perception that being in the fire department is very physically demanding, which it is. But women can do the job. And this camp, we, we have 12-year-old girls with fire hoses and ladders. And um Councilwoman McCray actually participated for a little bit in one of our camps. And we now have one of those girls um who's in Dunbar in their CTE program. Who, because of that camp, wants to come in the fire department. So um it's a small step, but it's a step in the right direction. COVID, uh, COVID kind of barred us from doing it last summer and probably this summer. But it's something that um Chief Ford has invested in, he wants us to do it every year. And I think that's a great way to show girls at a young age that they can do this job and they can be very successful in it. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Shiloh. As Chief Shiloh said, we, we are, I, I think in the process of trying to sort of grow our homegrown uh women in the fire department, reaching out. We are exploring many different options on uh new ways to recruit, uh new ways to train. With whether it's our high school students or looking into, you know, going to college campuses. But targeting uh women that we think will naturally, whether it's college athletes who will natural, be a natural fit. With some of the physical agility and, and sort of strenuous uh needs for. Because at the, at the end of the day, the women in the department um want to make sure that the quality of people that we are bringing on board is up to par with the demands of the job. So um, we are still, still sort of sorting through and, and looking at ways to optimize our recruitment and our training in that way. Um, and in terms of uh adding on to what Lieutenant Yancy said about the uh mentoring. There's a, a group of women um within the fire department, uh newly formed, it's called Phoenix. And it's made up of women leaders in the Department of, all three women here are members of Phoenix, Lieutenant Yancy, Chief Shiloh and Chief McConnell. And that is sort of the goal, is, is to figure out how we make service in the fire department better for the women. How we creatively come up with ways to recruit and train. So with that being said, um, I'm going to introduce Chief McConnell and she can talk about um one of the things that we're doing to sort of. There is a, there's a, a structural problem with the fire department and, and promoting women being that fire, the traditional EMT firefighter model versus um EMTs. We have a lot, you know, we are doing well um in the numbers of women who are in our EMT services. It's the suppression um units where we have the most trouble. So this committee is, is working to kind of figure out a way to end those sort of structural barriers for promotion. So Chief McConnell, please.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. Good afternoon. I'm Maya McConnell, Battalion Chief with the Baltimore City Fire Department. I've been a battalion chief for three years, I've been with the department for 16 years. And I know that promoting women is a top goal of Chief Ford. One of the ways that he has improved the promotional process specifically in fire. Um, because the test I took and did well on was 90% written exam, multiple choice, uh and 10% seniority. The test now, he's phased in oral components on the test. He's also using an outside vel- vendor to develop these tests to make sure that we're diverse. And where we're also better qualified candidates and the pool is actually larger. So that's, um, even though there, there are fewer women in fire suppression, the pool is smaller to begin with. Changing those elements of the promotional process is important to make sure that we get the best possible candidate. And as Ms. Washington said, in July of 2019, Chief Ford created the Fire and EMS Committee. Because fire and EMS is so separate in our department. One of the goals of this committee was to combine fire and EMS in as many ways as possible. And a subset of that is increasing promotional opportunities for women because more of our women are on EMS. The things that we're looking at in that committee, uh currently we're looking at updating and creating. Because we don't have acting manuals for all of our positions. And specifically, some of our EMS positions need updated. Um, so we're updating them and creating them on every level of advancement and supervision in both fire and EMS. And we hope to align these with those same promotional components, which will then improve and allow us to have an even more diverse candidate pool. Because they'll be better prepared when they're ready to go for the actual promotion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation. Um, if there are any questions, we stand ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to move on to the Department of Human Resources.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, can, can you hear me? Uh, the Department of Human Resources partners with uh both fire and police to post positions as well as to engage in active recruitment. Uh, for candidates to source uh those positions. When we talk about entry level, we're responsible for posting those entry level positions. Those are open uh at large. The promotional positions, some of them particularly in fire, are, are limited to existing employees due to a language in their collective bargaining agreements. Uh, and so there is uh limited in the, the pool of candidates that you can uh consider for some of those promotional opportunities. However, for the entry level positions, some of the things that we have done in working with fire and police is to uh partner and utilize uh recruitment tools. Such as LinkedIn and Indeed career pages. Uh, why that is so important is because both of these resources have specialty groups that are identified on those pages. That identify um uh groups such as women in the fire service, uh women in the, in the, in the police service. That allows us to do targeted recruitment uh and to, to get in front of those potential candidates and to encourage them to apply. Particularly for those entry level positions that we have here in Baltimore City. I will say that we are, uh, you've heard a bit about the specific programming that the fire service has. The police department also has a, a unique uh ways in which they target uh particularly female talent. Uh, I will defer to the police department to discuss the efforts that they have been making uh in advancing uh female in the police department's service. We continue to remain uh available and ready to continue to partner with our agencies to do targeted recruitment. Particularly for those entry level positions where we have a little more flexibility around targeting um and focusing in our recruitment efforts. Uh, and I, I think that uh our statement that we submitted in support of, of this bill uh further outlines our position.
Thank you, Director Herbert. Um, we're, we're going to move on to finally to the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for BBMR in the Department of Finance. Uh, we stand by our report, we defer to the agencies on the programs and work that they're doing on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Um, with that, um, the committee will now take questions from the committee. And I'm going to um actually start out with questions from. Oh, one second. Uh, forgive me, uh, we're, we're first going to hear from the panelists. Um, that, that'll be Ms. Angela Hughes and, and Ms. Yvonne Roman uh to speak about their experience um before we jump into questions. So with that, um. Ms. Roman and Ms. Hughes. Ms. Roman, I think you're muted.
I want to thank uh the Councilwoman for inviting me to be here. This is actually the first uh police department who I've gotten the opportunity to hear how they're planning on implementing the recommendations from the 30 by 30 um initiative. Um, Baltimore Police Department was among our, our first partnering agencies and I'm excited to see how they proceed. Uh, this will be a learning community, so agencies will share information on what's working within their agencies. So it can be replicated in other places. And I'm really happy to hear how advanced um Baltimore is as far as detailing how they're going to go about approaching that 30%. Uh, as I had mentioned before uh to the Councilwoman when I spoke to her about this, this is all based on research. There's a, a ton of, of, of research evidence showing the benefits to increasing the number of women in policing. You reduce your lawsuits, you reduce uh your, your citizen complaints. Uh, there's a increased satisfaction from citizens. So I commend you all for taking um active steps to increase the number of women in policing. Uh, I came about um the, the concept of the Women's Leadership Academy, which eventually became the 30 by 30 Initiative. Because of the number of women that were being dismissed from police academies in Newark, New Jersey. And what I found out what was that it wasn't isolated to Newark, it was the entire state where we were losing about 60 to 80% of our candidates uh that were female because of the physical fitness test. And now um the uh chief from the fire department mentioned that um she's training uh young adults to, to pass the exams. That's exactly what I found, if you invest in your applicants, that you can increase the number that pass and you don't lower the quality of your candidates. You merely test, um, teach them to pass the test instead of uh using the physical fitness test as a way to weed people out. So I'm a very excited to be here and I'm going to be monitoring closely what Baltimore is doing. So hopefully we can help our other partnering agencies in reaching their goals too. Thank you.
And Ms. Hughes?
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, thank you again to the Councilwoman for having me and, and taking on my experience from international level. And I will say, as a past president of Women in Fire, from an international level, we'll see that fire and police or any jobs that really require a lot of physical ability. The fire department is much lower uh compared to the military, the uh police department, um even, you know, the plumbers or skills like that. We're definitely much at a much lower level. Now Chief Ford has definitely taken the initiative with the Organization of Women in Fire and supporting us to ensure that Baltimore City is doing everything they can do. Lieutenant Yancy is on a national level, um, been recognized for her work, which, which is much appreciated. The thing that I think is really important to understand, and I can mirror a lot of which, mirror a lot of what Chief Shiloh had mentioned about how different things were in 1989. When I started in Baltimore City Fire Department and how they are now. But the one thing that is really important to remember is you can recruit and recruit and recruit, but retention is the key because you will be your own best recruiter. And having those people out on the, on the front lines showing that they can do the job and have done the job is really important. Their mental and physical health, if they're happy where they are, it's going to show and you'll be your own recruiters in that method. Now, um, looking at the physical ability at, aspect of it, I think it's really important to recognize the difference between fire and EMS. And coming into the fire service as a firefighter, there are internationally recognized tests such as uh CPAT, which is a candidate ability test. That gear is geared strictly toward uh someone that would be a firefighter. And it measures the, the job related skills that you need to have. And having um something that is not necessarily qualified or quantified for all sizes of people, all different strength levels. It's definitely a bit of an injustice to those who are applying. I'm happy to help in any way that I can with Baltimore City. As I said, that's where I started. I appreciate the initiatives that you're doing and um, you know, just Chief, Chief Ford's doing a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Uh, with that, I'm going to open the floor to questions first by the bill sponsors, Councilman. Councilwoman McCray. Excuse me, Councilwoman McCray.
I want to first just thank Lieutenant Anse, Chief Shiloh, Chief McConnell, retired Chief Yvonne Roman of the Newark Police Department, retired Captain Angela Hughes of the Baltimore County Fire Department. Just for hearing the great information that they provided, also want to applaud our Baltimore Police Department for the promotion of Colonel Briscoe to Deputy Commissioner and for being one of the first cities to actually sign on to the 30 by 30 pledge. Just to get into the questions that I have for today. I know that the Fire Department, both the Fire Department and both the Police Departments, their staff with an Equity Officer, Director Washington is here from the Fire Department right now. I want to know what immediate projects, or can you speak to the immediate projects that, for Ms. Washington, that you're working on? And for the Police Department, that you're immediately working on to address the barriers that women face within your agency?
Thank you, Ms. Councilwoman. One of the things that we are working, my sort of first thing that I told the chief that I wanted to work on was women and recruiting more women. I think that begins within, and in terms of retaining women in the Fire Department, working with Phoenix, working with, I think Lieutenant Anse and I probably talk more than I talk to anyone outside of this building, just about how we can improve the conditions. Because I believe it was Deputy Commissioner Gillis who talked about the conditions or what caused people to leave. So if we can make sure that people are staying and that we are mentoring them so that they will take the next step and go for those promotions, that is sort of my first project here. I've been here, I think, two months? Two and a half months? So that is my, the thing that I'm working on first while I'm here, is how do we retain and how do we recruit? And going about it in sort of more non-traditional ways, you know, COVID budgets are what they are. So trying to think creatively on how we do this with fewer funds.
And for the Police Department?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman McCray. My name is Bill Joyner. I'm the Equity Officer for the Baltimore Police Department. I've been here for, next week it'll be one year, since my sort of hiring at BPD. And so, the immediate projects that were happening, so my work really focuses on enabling and catalyzing equity work that has already been in the works at the BPD. Much of it actually led by women. And so, internally, related to this effort, so like, one of the goals of the BPD is to make sure that access to upward mobility, access to a safe work environment, access to leadership at BPD is not limited by a person's gender, among a number of other dimensions of identity. But since this meeting is focused on gender, we'll stick to that. And so, related to that, promotions is a large area of focus. And so, one thing that's working there is that you'll probably already know, many members of the council, that the BPD has a low, it's mentioned, our percentage of women employees for sworn is far lower than the total population of the city of Baltimore. But when you look at not just the total amount of employees, but when you look at the distribution of female sworn employees, there is an equal distribution. But that is partly because we have such a small number, right? And so, as we prepare to recruit more people, we have to look at sort of like, how do we make sure that there are processes to advance women in proportion throughout? So with our promotions process, we have actually launched two new policies that are currently in draft, Form 1721 and 1738, for command promotions and classified promotions. And in those processes, we have a process analysis and also an outcome analysis for each round of promotions. And in that, so I guess in the interest of time, we plan to explain all of the explicitly equity-related provisions of those policies. But I think we will, for this meeting, just send you copies of those policies with the explicitly equity-related provisions highlighted, unless, of course, you would like us to go in-depth in this meeting. But I would like to explain the process analysis. And so, we have a demographic analysis of applicants during promotions, the pool of eligible employees, the interviewees, and the process results. Because as you know, the promotions process does not exist as an island, that our ability to promote women also depends on the number of eligible women who can apply for those promotions, which is also related to the number of women in the workforce who are currently placed in positions that gain them the qualifications and skills needed to apply, which is also dependent on the number of women in the workforce as a whole. And so, we are connecting all of those pieces as a part of that analysis, or finding out what is the potential impact on equity of the eligibility requirements? What is the impact of the content of the applications, of the interview questions, the composition of the selection panel? And also considerations during deliberation by that panel? And sort of seeing how we can identify how ways to expand the pool of eligible employees, of employees through the recruitment process. And as you heard a little bit, Deputy Bassfield has very detailed plans and initiatives about how to increase that pool of women in the department that even identifies the individual steps where there's a drop-off that represents a disparate impact on women in physical fitness, et cetera, at the application stage, the fitness stage, hiring stage, et cetera. And so, it's really taking steps to catalyze work like that happening in the recruitment section and advancing work happening in promotions led by the Commissioner's Office and things like that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have one additional question. And I know you want to open it up to your other committee members. But there are a ton of barriers. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are a ton of barriers that we did not discuss and that we're not going to be able to discuss today due to time. But I just want to know what internal complaint system does your organization have in place for women to report when they've been a victim of discrimination, a bias, or a sexual harassment?
For the Baltimore Police Department, Director Guevara, can you address this question?
Yes, sure. Thank you, sorry. Hi, I'm Director Guevara. I'm the Director of the Human Resources Department. The Baltimore Police Department has an Equal Opportunity and Diversity Section where employees, any employee of the Police Department who feels they're being discriminated against, harassed, treated differently, retaliated against, can file a formal complaint that is received, reviewed, and investigated thoroughly. We do have a policy, an equal opportunity policy, that is public to all employees. And I'm happy to get that over to you as well, so you can see what that is. But there is a formal process. In addition to our Equal Opportunity and Diversity Section, we also have the Public Integrity Bureau, so, which is another avenue for employees to bring forward concerns. And if something comes to them that is related to an employee feeling they're being treated differently because of their race, religion, national origin, age, any of the protected categories, Public Integrity Bureau informs the Equal Opportunity and Diversity Section. And then, again, we take it and we investigate it. Did that answer your question, ma'am?
It did. For the Fire Department?
Yes, Lisa Wood is on the line. I believe she can explain that.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Lisa Wood, Director of Human Resources. We also have a policy in place for any employee of the Fire Department who can file a formal complaint with Human Resources. We also have an Equal Opportunity Officer who would then investigate that complaint and determine the outcome. We follow our policies and procedures. And if it is determined that there is substantiated, then we would, of course, implement any disciplinary training, education that may be needed to ensure that the behavior is mitigated and stopped immediately and that it doesn't occur in the future. Does that answer your question?
Thank you both for your responses. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. I have a couple of questions. And I'll try and be brief with those. So, you know, when thinking about policies and practice within each of your agencies, Fire and Police, we know that having a woman in the room is incredibly important toward making sure that those perspectives are taken into account. Is there some sort of policy or understanding or practice that we constantly observe and check ourselves on to ensure that women and their perspectives are taken into account when developing policies, procedures, and the likes?
Well, for the Fire Department, Chief Ford has a mostly female executive team that examines policies and procedures. Like I said, I've been here for two and a half months. So I'm not sure, you know, if there are any other... But I know that there is an extensive group that examines everything. And there are women represented on almost every policy, every practice that we have.
And Fire? Excuse me, and Police?
Hi there. So, all of our policies have to be developed through the consent decree process that the Consent Decree Implementation Unit manages that development. And ushering then that draft policy through the consent decree process, which includes public comment and then coordination with the monitoring team and the Department of Justice. And there, most of that team is comprised of women. It was when I was leading it. It still is. And, but most importantly, what they do is they try to seek out intentionally input from folks who are dealing with that particular topic operationally and making sure that they have diverse individuals weighing in on that topic. We have had a very targeted, I forget the term, small group meetings with folks at different ranks, on different topics, as we develop policies. Because it was important, and it is important, to make sure that we are considering all points of view as we're developing these policies that will be in effect for quite some time.
Thank you. And my second question has to do with strategies around recruitment, retention, and promotion. Now, we all know that in workplace culture, having folks invest in time in you and mentor you is incredibly important towards your ability to grow and achieve. Have, has the Police Department and Fire Department thought much about creating some sort of mentorship program for women to help women navigate the sometimes complicated and opaque process that is promotion and retention?
Good afternoon, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much, Councilwoman McCray, for bringing this bill forward. Thank you so much, Councilor, Chairperson, for allowing me to speak today. I just want to touch on that a little bit. Going through this process of evaluating where we are, where we've been successful and then not so much in terms of recruitment, retention, and hiring of female officers, I can tell you, in my 27 years, this work is important to me. I'm passionate about it. And so are the other women that are on this call today from the Police Department. There's nothing like having someone, even at my level, that you can reach out to, that you can seek advice from, that you can get support from, that you can hear from. Because oftentimes, our issues are not reflected in our counterparts. So quite frankly, we look for that. We look for each other, and we often seek each other out. So one of the things that Commissioner Harrison, when we raised this bill, these issues, even before now, when we brought it to his attention, he committed to being willing to allow us to form and supporting that form, a formal mentorship. Because we do it informally. But to create a formal process that we're able to keep track of, you know, how we're doing, hold ourselves accountable to who's involved and who's engaged, that's one of the things that we are working on now, because we find the need for it in a more formal way that will transcend getting through the door. Because oftentimes, the conversations are about hiring. It's really retention, retention as well. So in that vein, I can tell you that Bill Joyner was a lot modest. He has been working with my division. Currently, I'm the Chief of Detectives and working on a rubric. As we are putting out postings for position opportunities for detectives, one of the very first things that I noticed when I came to this part of the organization of operations that is there are far fewer women. So we have been working on a rubric to try to break the barriers through the interview process and the experience process that really will allow us to find more opportunities to bring women into this division. So we're committed to mentorship through the sundry of ways. I hope that answered your question.
It does, and that's awesome. Thank you. And Fire Department?
I think Lieutenant Anse spoke extensively. Mentoring is one of the most important tools. The Fire Service is unique. People live together. So it is extremely important to have women mentor each other and in order to help to retain them. And that is something that was lacking. I think it's getting better. And our plan is to set up something that is more formal.
That's good to hear. And I look forward to learning more about that once it does come into play. With that, I want to open to questions from the committee. I see Councilman Burnett has got a question. I see Councilman Cohen thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And also, thank you, Councilmember McCray, for taking this up and continuing to push for greater equity and opportunity for women in government. Definitely appreciate your fight on this. I did have a couple of questions. And actually, one of the issues was raised by the panelist, Ms. Hughes, around the issue of physical agility. So this question is directed to the Fire Department. I know one of the things that came up in a previous hearing was the use of ladders and carrying ladders and that kind of thing as a part of the training, which my understanding isn't something that would typically be done by an individual on the scene of a fire. So I guess the question I have here is, can we confirm that, that that's something that is still taking place? If it isn't, you know, what, I guess, caused that to change? If it is, are we looking at sort of the adverse impact that, you know, additional physical agility or activities that don't really always align with protocol on the scene? You know, is that being looked at as something that should be removed from the physical agility task?
Councilman Burnett, this is Chief Ford, Chairman Chief Ford, members. Approximately five years ago, well, prior to five years ago, the Department used a program called CPAT. It's a nationally endorsed program. It meets NFPA standards and FPA 1582 and some of the other standards that are required. Partly because of a white paper that was written by then-international Women in Fire Service, now Women in the Fire Service, I investigated other organizations. And I, we brought in another organization to develop a reliable physical agility test, a candidate test. in another organization to develop a reliable physical agility test, candidate test. Based upon that, they outline, outlined based upon the person's job and their requirements in their job. And when we develop these type of physical tests, they have to be based upon the work that they incumbent to do. We can't, we can't, we can't pull parts out of it because once, once we do that as an agency, it becomes, it becomes nonvalid and it becomes not reliable in the environment that we're in. Consequently, we do have a lot of components that are in that test. So, I just, I just wanted you to be aware of that. The test is based upon, they research based upon incumbents who already performed the job in order for it to be valid and reliable.
Got it. Mr. Chair, I know we have two questions. Can I ask you a quick follow-up on that point because the other question is unrelated to the physical agility thing?
Of course.
And thank you for the clarification, Chief Ford. Does the agency capture data on potential adverse impacts that the latter carry removal criteria may be disqualifying a number of female candidates? Is that something that is?
Well, we're looking at the entire attributes of the physical agility test. In fact, Chief McConnell at that time, who was a captain out of training, that was part of her job and she was, she was actually over it and we discussed it when we made the change. Part of what we're doing is evaluating whether or not this process causes any disparate impact in hiring. So, we're actually evaluating it and continuously doing, quite frankly, no matter what physical agility test we put in place, we'd have to evaluate whether or not it calls a disparate impact to anyone.
Got it. And my second question, Mr. Chair. So, the, we looked at the data in 20, this is actually a couple of years ago. 2015, the fire department had 1,300 women apply for the EMT firefighter position. At the end of the pre-employment screening process, there were 55 women left to hire. What were some of the barriers that the fire department found for why they lost 1,245 female candidates and what is being done to mitigate those issues moving forward?
I'm gonna, we have Captain Robinson on the line. If he can speak to some of the statistics that we're involved in, and I'll speak further about some of the decisions we made after that.
Good afternoon. I think in the beginning, what we found was, even though we had a large amount, a large pool of applicants, what we did find is, once we reached out, our largest reduction of applicants, we lost in the initial phase of just contacting them and inviting them to the written test itself. So, after, at that point, then we started to lose feeble applicants who refused, I guess, set up an email just for the application process and then either forgot the password or were reluctant or forgot to check that email. Then, once we got to the physical ability phase, we realized that, I think, one of the lessons learned is that we will, moving forward, start to offer some sort of practice for all applicants, but especially the women applicants to go and actually, you know, climb the stairs, lift the ladder, drag a hose, things of that nature. Because when you really think about it, it's not pure strength, it's more technique. And once you learn that technique, the job gets easier. So, through those four different phases is basically when we lost the large, well, lost most of the applicants, not just women, but especially women.
So, Councilman, one of the things we did do, we did do videos based on the physical agility test. In the video, we gave people common exercises that they can do to prepare for it. And quite frankly, we realized, at least I realized, that that wasn't enough and the assumption that I made of having all the candidates and we did really well with recruitment on the front end, thinking that they'd make it on the back end with all the information we provided, it wasn't nearly as effective as I had hoped for. So, I meet with, I meet with women in the fire service. Our chapter is Phoenix, the Phoenix Fire, and I meet with them consistently. And in fact, Chief McConnell, that was one of Chief McConnell's strongest recommendations is that we have to make sure that the candidates that we have are credible candidates for the job. And the best way we can do that is prepare them for the physical agility test and we're looking at up to eight weeks at least to offer hands-on training on equipment and explanations. But when we, when we do that, we're going to try to, as far as from a media standpoint, we're going to try to focus on women. But when we open the doors, we have to be non-biased. Anybody that comes in, we have to sit down and work with them.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I reserve my, the rest of my questions for the next round.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, also thank you to the sponsor for pushing on this important issue. Thanks also to all the agencies for being here today. Want to address the police department specifically and go back to sort of a prior question around the consent decree. And, you know, we know that generally, people don't want to join or stay in an organization if they perceive the culture to be toxic toward their subgroup. And we do know from the consent decree that we have had, you know, and we know from just asking Baltimoreans, that we have had serious issues within our police department around racism and sexism, specifically a fair amount of violence against women by officers, particularly violence against sex workers. I have seen improvement under leadership of Commissioner Harrison and I appreciate that. But I'd like to know specifically, what are we doing to address sort of the cultural gaps within the department where in previous iterations, we've had rape kits go missing or not be reported on? We've had sex workers experience sexual violence by officers against them. Like, what are we doing to turn the tide in terms of the internal culture within the department beyond just recruiting, retention, promotion?
Sorry, I was having difficulty finding my mute button. So, Councilman, thank you for that question. I think all of the items that are instances that you mentioned occurred prior to the start of the implementation of the consent decree, unless I'm mistaken. And as most of you know, the consent decree is 511 paragraphs. It amounts to an entire remake of our department from nuts to bolts, top to bottom. And so, a big portion of that and ingrained in kind of every action item that we have is accountability. We are accountable to ourselves. We are accountable to the monitoring team, to the Department of Justice, to the judge, to the public when we report out on a quarterly basis. And so, and those requirements, those accountability requirements are baked into the policies, into the audit teams that we have created, into the reporting mechanisms that we have developed. And so, what you will see, and I think that we're already seeing it to some degree, this change in culture and that, you know, you have probably heard the commissioner talk a great deal about changing the culture, not only to make sure that we are changing how we're interacting with the public, but we are changing how we're interacting with ourselves, which is just as important, frankly. He has talked about the EPIC program. Ethical policing is courageous. I believe we are almost done training everyone in the department and that is a program that they took, that they started in New Orleans. They brought it to Baltimore and it is, has already moved throughout the country. But what this is, is a peer intervention program. So, if an officer sees another fellow officer getting ready to escalate, whether internally or externally, if they are ready, if they are getting ready to do something that seems or feels not quite right, the other officers have been trained on how do you intervene? How do you stop that from progressing? And again, it's really important to note that that mechanism, that training, is on how you intervene, not only when we're dealing with the public, but when we're dealing with our own internally. So, I think that back combined with all the other changes that we are making, changes to training, changing to the policy and changes to accountability will help. Not to mention the fact that we are changing what our command staff looks like. We are changing what our frontline supervisors look like. You heard from our equity officer, Bill Joyner, a bit ago, who talked about how we are changing and formalizing the promotions process, especially at the command level, which is key. It used to be you got promoted because you were a buddy of the commissioner or one of his deputies. That is not the case at all. We recruit folks to apply. We encourage anyone who is eligible to apply. And then, we use the standards that Bill spoke about. But the other thing that is absolutely key to making sure we have more women and persons of color at the command level is making sure we have more persons of color and women at the first-line supervisory rank. So, at the sergeant level, at the lieutenant level. And so, what, for years, the law has stated that the commissioner has to look at, when he's looking to promote sergeants and lieutenants, he can only look at the first five individuals on, in terms of their ranking, how they scored on the promotional exam, they can only look at the first five, the top five scores. And so, what that means is, if the first five people on that exam are all white guys, that's who he has to promote. And so, what we worked this legislative session, we worked successfully, yay, to change that law, to not necessarily negate the testing provision, but to provide more flexibility. So, now, what the law will be when it goes into effect is, the commissioner gets to look at the first 25%. So, you know, the number will be based on how many folks took the exam and then we can really then follow the policy for those promotions because then we're looking at, how did they interview? How were they, you know, what are their scores in terms of their interactions with the community? You know, have they fully embraced the reform effort? You know, we need to take all those things into consideration. So, we have been working very, very hard in changing the structural dynamics within the agency to allow for, not only just allow for, but to ensure the promotion of more women at each rank in this department. Sorry, I got a little fired up there, Councilman.
No, I appreciate it. Appreciate the passion, of course, and I do appreciate the ways that I think the department has come and will still say that there is a long, long way to go when we look at the data, when we look at the, just anecdotally on the street. And I guess, you know, this is final point, I don't want to belabor it, but really, what I want to look hard at is not just how we treat each other within the department internally, but also how we treat women and girls on the street, out of the department, right? Like, to me, part of the challenge, when you're talking about recruitment, when you're talking about how do we become a more equitable, just organization, is that there is a perception that I think still looms large for a lot of people, that the department is at times racist and at times sexist and past behaviors have borne that out of officers. And so, I think you're right to push on the recruitment, the promotion and everything else, but just, I think the way women, girls and everybody perceives the department on the street level really, really, really matters. Thanks.
No, absolutely. And thank you for asking that follow-up question. Bill Joyner is going to address that because we have taken great steps to make sure that those interactions are far more appropriate and beneficial to all. Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Michelle. And thank you, Councilman. That's a really important point. Thank you for highlighting that and we do take it very seriously, understanding how much further we have to go. So, we have been working really hard to integrate more community members into the process of developing these changes of policy and training and accountability with us focusing most intensely on the most vulnerable populations, including women, including trans women, other trans people and sexual orientation and gender identity minorities, immigrants, people with behavioral health issues, et cetera. So, we have a broad sort of like coalition of identities that have been on the receiving end of our pattern of practice of violating civil rights. And so, we invited those groups that are most impacted by those practices to help us change like the learning objectives for the trainings about fear and impartial policing and community policing. And the vast majority of developers from the community perspective for the community policing training that will be launched May 3rd are women and from the community are actually minority women. And includes multiple trans individuals, most of whom are also trans women. And so, we have been looking at this and working hard and we still have improvements to go in that, right? We still have more populations to reach and more sub-demographics in those populations to reach as well. But we take your point and we have been diligently working on that as fast as we can.
No, I appreciate that. I do see you doing that work, Bill, and I do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to members.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Are there any other questions from the committee? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trying to go through my list in a minute, I'm going to double it back around. Actually, I think actually the one I had, I wanted to follow up on, I think has been covered. So, I'll allow the other members to jump in.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee before we move to testimony?
And, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm unable to raise my hand. This is more of a request for both the Baltimore City Fire Department and also our police department. If you can just provide to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee, the building facilities update, maybe a timeline on the updates that you're doing. Understand that we talked about bathroom updates, maybe lactation rooms, but can you provide some type of timeline for the completion? I know that some of you may be exploring that now to the committee directly. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. We'll make sure that when we do get that, we get that information right to you. Seeing no further questions, we're going to move to public testimony. Michelle, can you please transfer the, oh, great. There we go. So, for public testimony, committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. If you're connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. Again, if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or to provide their testimony. back or to provide their testimony in the chat function. So with that, uh, please, uh, if you'd like to testify, use the raise hand function at the bottom right of your screen, and we'll make sure to acknowledge you. Seeing no testimony, do we have any from the phone lines? No call-ins either. All right. Um, with that, uh, the chair will now entertain, um, a, a motion to, um, to move this bill favorable.
Uh, make the motion to move the bill?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Burnett, and a second by Councilwoman Ramos. Chair Conway, yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Okay.
Cohen?
Yes.
The slicer doesn't appear to be working.
Councilwoman Porter, you're, you're-
And also, you want to go to March 1st, okay?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Aye.
Councilman Glover?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilman Glover? Councilman Glover is absent. Uh, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Uh, that, that would be six yeas and, uh, one absent vote, zero nays. Uh, so this will move forward, uh, at the next council hearing. I want to thank the bill sponsor, uh, Councilwoman McCray. Uh, Councilwoman McCray, do you want any closing comments before we, um, put this bill in recess?
I'll keep it short. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the committee, um, the committee members. I truly appreciate you. I want to thank everyone who took time, um, to join in from the various agencies, um, our guest panelists. Um, we look forward to seeing the progress, um, that we will make, um, regarding women within public safety. Um, but thank you all.
All right. Um, thank you, Councilwoman McCray, and I appreciate the dialogue and the discussion. Um, with that, I'm going to put this committee in the recess for just two minutes, so the folks can gather themselves and clear out, uh, before we move on to the next bill.